Our great family father, we're so thankful that we could be here this day. We're so thankful for the opportunity we have of being a members of this council. Bless us that we may strive to represent those people of our town well, help us to set a good example to those around us and to be able to think and make clear decisions. We'd ask a special blessing this time that the elements may be tempered so that the farmers may be able to get the rest of their crops off and that people may be able to travel true and far safely. We're so grateful for all we have. We know that all we have comes from the... We'd ask a special blessing on those that have lost family and that they may feel of our love and support. We're grateful for these things and we say them humbly in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Saint Councilor Brown, I'll take your thoughtful comments. Hi, Councillors, I need to silence my phone when one to be disturbed. All right. So today is the 9th of October and we have our regular council meeting at this time. We want to send Channel 32, Corrie MacAlsey, for taking the proceeding of this session. Thank you. We do have a delegation at 6 o'clock, but we're not so sure that the person that's supposed to come will be able to attend at this time, so we may have to wait and see. We will call this meeting to order and you have the agenda. It's quite comprehensive. We have...
Can I mention quick on the... If you looked at it earlier, I added a delegation today. It's to support the closed session item later, so number B should be Dr. Robert Russell. He's coming in for the closed session later on.
All right. Councillor Beney?
Mayor, I have additional candidates, just questions on the votes.
Can we maybe treat that under question, under item sent? Okay, so I will put you there. Thank you, Councillor.
Is there another question, Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Self?
Can I direct my question at Jeff?
If you may.
Jeff, under our numerous motions this evening, we have one regarding the subcommittee on recreational facility. Were we also gonna approve some names this evening?
You know, I didn't have those prepared because I'll get an application from them next week. Yeah, I do recall you talked about a couple specifically, but I haven't talked to them.
Okay. Because I think we'd like to proceed as...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
...to get that subcommittee rolling.
Sure.
Okay. So...
Can you wait?
Yeah, we'll leave it.
We're gonna have to get a few others rounded up too, so...
I guess we'll leave it up to Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have an agenda to approve.
Take the motion to approve the agenda. The additions. Councillor Cole?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I would like an offensive item added, dealing with harassment, harassment. Just a discussion within... Because it's a sensitive issue, I think it could go under confidential items.
Jeff, you?
I know the nature of what we're talking about. Yeah, I'd have to grab... I'd have to cite something, but you could justify it in closed session, yes.
Okay, so you're aware of it. All right. Okay, so there will be one extra item added under confidential item and has to do with harassment.
Shem, I'll find your reference in a bit here.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Now, with those additions, we need to approve the agenda. Councillor Beney?
I like the motion to approve the agenda. Where's the additions?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. We have minutes of the regular meeting of September 11, 2018 that need to be approved. If the content reflects our meaning, then it approved. Thank you.
I'll make a motion and we adopt the ready opinion service, that's a brother.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Councillor... I still want to call you Councillor Creve. Thank you for being there for Temple Star. Thank you. All right. So now we need to go under six. Bylaw 1672, Truth and Reconciliation Advisory Committee. All the bylaws that are there cited under six will require second and third reading. We have passed first reading.
Except for D, Mayor.
Except for D, correct.
For what?
D will require first reading. So, the bylaw 1672, Truth and Reconciliation Advisory Committee addressed the composition and the terms of preference for that committee. It doesn't address the content of what that committee will do.
I like the second reading of that bylaw.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Third reading of the bylaw, 1672.
All right. Questions? Sign on. All in favor? Thank you very much. Councillor Cole, do you have a problem with your...
Not anymore. Kind of came back again.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, thank you. Otherwise, I was going to give you one of my copies. I happened to have to...
See, you're word multiple again.
Yeah. All right. 6B, bylaw 1673, the cannabis control bylaw, with first reading. If you remember, there was a nuisance section that was integrated to that bylaw. The language comes as recommended by our legal team and therefore seems to be in keeping with the advice of our legal.
Jeff? Why is that not a public hearing required?
For the... So you had a public... We had a public hearing on the land use bylaw portion. You do not require a public hearing on the cannabis control portion. You always have discretion for any kind of public input you want, but these types, contrary to land use types, are not required.
This comes in with the... Everything new we should be aware of?
Not that I've heard, no. You're just seeing... You're seeing a lot along the vein you've gone, both on land use and on control. You're seeing a lot of that happening right now. It seems to be quite common.
We have second reading by Councillor Self. Questions? Sign on. All in favor? Thank you.
I'll move the third read of bylaw 1673.
Okay. That's okay. Councillor Cole, move third reading of bylaw 1673. No questions?
I have a... Just a comment. I had a gentleman contact me the other day, said he watched it on TV and he was very pleased with the way that we handled this. He was quite happy.
Oh, thank you for the feedback.
Yeah.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Councillor Drew, now it's your turn. Bylaw 1583B, Family and Community Support Services Amendment, bylaw, as you remember, we had to make amendments to the governance of that committee and we require second reading. Councillor Drew?
Second reading of bylaw 1583B.
Yes?
This is a requisition committee. What transparency do they have to this council?
FCSS. There is a budget that is approved and is to be reported to the province.
But it also...
And it also comes...
...to this council.
And the Councilor Brown is the one that is overseeing that for us.
So we're gonna get a financial statement from this area?
The town gets one of these?
It's reviewed, is audited, and presented.
The town does that?
Yes.
Hockin takes care of that.
Okay. Thank you for the question, by the way. It's always good to know.
Hockin does it at the other way?
How is it not at town?
Do you want me to speak that quick?
Yes.
So you... FCSS is included in your budget. You pass it. It is audited independently, but we prepare it and then it's audited by our audit.
Is not... Hockin, is he not on contract anyways?
Oh, yeah. Like, he prepares the budget with all their stuff and with direction from the board, what they're proving for upcoming year. But it's audited as a... It's a separate piece of the audit that comes after ours by the audit.
Okay. That is for you. Okay. So, no further comments or questions, all in favor? Thank you very much. So, go ahead.
Can I ask? First reading? First reading, 1583B.
Yes. So, no further questions, comment? All in favor? Thank you very much. 6D, the bylaw 1582D, utility rates bylaw. As you remember, we reviewed rates at the last CCW that we had. We looked at it and we now will have Jeff, Jeff Kana, to speak to us regarding that.
I just wanted to speak to one thing we didn't talk about at CCW and it's been in development here for a little while. We... Many of you know, we have a raw water irrigation line that flows from the water plant down to Rotary Park is where it ends. And we have the golf course is the predominant user on that line, uses the majority of it, and then it goes to reunion center, campground, Lions Park, Rotary Park for raw water irrigation. We have had a couple of requests and some people who have connected to that. We connected the Remington Museum, for example, to the raw water last year. So they're using raw instead of treated water for their irrigation needs. And we have other inquiries if people can hook onto it. So, for example, Mr. Dallin Levitt is hooked onto it, as an example. And there's others in that area that would like to hook on. So what... One thing we put in this version was, we've been having some discussion about how do we hook people onto it and how do we charge them? How do we bill them? Because one of the issues we had when we started talking with Mr. Levitt was, well, you gotta put a meter in and then we'll have a per meter rate. And just the infrastructure cost for him to hook on, it wasn't worth his time. Just pay the premium in your water bill. It wouldn't make any sense. So what we did is we proposed in here is a... And if I can find it here real quick. On the second... Or it's actually on the first page of all the Schedule A. We have a community irrigation line. What we did is we mimicked Levitt Irrigation's rates. So what it is, there's a per acre charge with a minimum parcel charge. So it's $250 a year to hook on, but it isn't metered. So Levitt Irrigation derives these amounts by saying, what is reasonable for a property of a certain size to use? And...
Jeff, can you give us a chance?
Yeah.
To find it here because...
Yeah, Schedule A. You have residential and then you have commercial and industrial, and then under other, you have water fill station and community irrigation.
Oh, I don't have that. You must have...
Well, it shouldn't have changed.
Okay. Yeah, it's just not printed. It's all right, thanks. I trust you. It's okay.
I didn't think we changed that one, but okay. What we did is we mimicked Levitt Irrigation. So if there are people who want to connect on that, what it'll do is help us offset our Levitt Irrigation costs as well.
Yes.
And so we've put that rate in the bylaw. Now, the other part of this is connection fees. How do you come up with an appropriate amount to connect because you have this wide variety of distance and need to connect? And so what we put in... It's at the very end of Schedule A for connection fees is that the costs are to be determined per connection. And we'll simply just do it on that... We have margin in our machine time and in our labor when we bill it. It'll simply be quoted and given... The resident will be given a cost to say, here's what it will cost to extend to your property. And they can make a decision as to whether or not they want to do that. We don't have a huge amount of properties that could connect onto this and frankly, we can't have a huge amount of properties at this point. We don't have... We'd have to just manage what times everyone was using it so that there was enough pressure everywhere, right? Because it wouldn't work for everyone at the same time. So we just did a cost basis for connection and mimicked Levitt Irrigation. I wanted to put that out there for some feedback.
Okay. So, Councillor Brown, Councillor Beney?
Beney? Councillor Brown? So, how do we justify saying yes to some and no to others?
Right. So, a lot of it will... I don't want to say self-police. It will eliminate by the cost of connection. So for me, for example, if I wanted to connect, I'd have to have a push under the creek and then all the way up and it would probably be $10,000 for Jeff to connect. And I'd have to pay that. So for me, I'll just pay the premium on treated water. Like, it isn't gonna make sense for me, but Mr. Creed and I have had this discussion that if it ever came across the creek, it might make sense for him to connect. So we just have to look at... It's not unreasonable that we may want to, of our own choice, push a line up to Sunset Park.
Yeah.
So that we can water that with raw water irrigation. Well, now it might only be $1,000 for Jeff to connect, so it makes sense for me to do it. But for someone further in the block, it just can't happen.
And do we have it for... Do we have it for the park over by me? Like, is it brought to Town Square?
No, it's not to Town Square. No.
So we don't have it to all the parks?
No, we don't.
Right now, that's as far as it's brought?
Yeah, it's a gravity system and so it's simply heading down 9th Avenue. It follows all of 9th Avenue. It goes behind Dallin Levitt's house, goes through the Ellison property, goes down the hill, crosses under, follows... Sorry, goes under the creek and then follows the creek on the east side all the way down to Rotary Park. And there is one line under the creek at Lions Park so that it can go under there and then water Lions Park.
All right. So are we okay with this? Councillor Beney and Councillor Barnes, Councillor Self?
Jeff, our cemetery is fed by Levitt Irrigation.
So, yeah, it's not the same line. It's Levitt Irrigation, but from a different source, yes.
And who has the water rights for that?
Well, we do. We hold about $7,500 worth of license out of Levitt Irrigation. It's... I don't want to say it's expensive. It's relatively expensive and we don't use a huge percentage of it. So we have, for example, the West Industrial Area all has irrigation license for it. Some areas actually inside that are now privately owned, which we need to get sorted out, hold some irrigation license. We're looking now, right now, at seeing if we could bring in Levitt Irrigation through this whole West area, this West area structure plan we're discussing. We have an outlet in the West Industrial Area, not the same line. So it's a line that comes straight down that... By the Cemetery Road into the industrial area and we're wondering whether there's any asphalt and curb and sidewalk and all that other. You got large homes with large lots out there. They may really benefit from raw water irrigation in that area. If we could come down what will be 2nd Avenue and then down 10th, and potentially you could have a lot of owners hook on there as well. And it would make sense for those properties to pay the $250 a year to have raw water irrigation.
Now, when we talk about water, that's the second part of my question. Do we buy them from the county or the county?
No. We purchase them from Levitt Irrigation. Yeah, we are a customer of the irrigation district, yes.
Jeff, on the golf course, I'm assuming they pay per... So much per acre on there because... What... How many acres is it there using raw water?
Good question.
Because it's big.
Oh, yeah. I would say, we estimate the golf course is 90% of the water we put through the community irrigation. Yeah, it's a huge amount.
So they would have a pretty hefty bill.
Well, if we split it up, it'd be about 90% to $7,500.
Okay.
Now, we're not using all, but if we... We have to pay for it every year because we have access to it.
Do we know how much water is going through there?
We do. I just don't have it... We do know that number. I just don't have it on me. I'd have to ask Bart.
Okay. Because I guess the question is coming into my mind, the issue we had with the metering system before. So, we got that corrected now?
So, the quick history for the new councillors. There was a pump specific for the community irrigation line. So the... Because Levitt Irrigation sometimes isn't until May long weekend. It's not available. The golf course needs to start watering sometimes in March. So we have a pump that sits in our raw water pond that fills the pipe when Levitt Irrigation isn't in use. And we had some controversy a couple of years back about who should be paying for the meter cost of that pump. Because, anyway, it was hooked to town infrastructure and we shared the line and there was a number of things going on there. That pump is now being fed through the water plant and so its cost is in the water plant and it is not an individual meter anymore. We tried to eliminate those delivery charges by putting it in the... There was capacity in the plant to do it that way, but we still use it. They'll be using it... They would have used it the tail end of the year because Levitt Irrigation would have shut off. And we know that number because we used to bill black sands or proportionate use of all of the irrigation water. So there is a meter at that voltage.
Okay. Councillor Self?
I'm curious, Jeff, in terms of community raw water irrigation. So it's the Edna Irrigation District that we use for soccer fields?
Correct.
And that line goes to the edge of soccer fields?
Yeah, I know... Well, it goes out into the county because there's a pivot right across by the academy. There's a pivot just north of the academy, but the junior high and the soccer park are on that.
And the East Hill property was on it too.
Oh, really? Yeah, I'm sure Doug, Sheen, and East Hills and some of them have that arranged within their parcels. I don't know.
So, I guess I'm sort of thinking along the same West area structure.
Could you... Can I do something?
How are we in terms of our water rights with the irrigation district fulfilling?
I'd have to look at that one. I happened to just see the invoice for Levitt. But I would guess we're using just a fraction of what we have access to through it because we only water the soccer park. It's the only town piece we use it for.
So there is some potential for expanding that to the East Hill residents of the lot?
Yeah, I would think so. At least a new development, you can put the infrastructure in without tearing up everything under the sun.
So that brings a question to me. If residents... The line obviously goes from Edna and goes behind the Sheen property.
Yeah, North Sheen's on it. That's true.
And the East Hill is, and it's filled behind...
Yeah.
Behind our property, the Russell property has it too. So what about if residents in that area wanted to hook on that line?
Then we would give them the cost of the infrastructure to hook on and they'd pay us $250 a year.
Okay, so maybe something that would be worth while looking at because I think at the cost of the water in the summertime, $250 would be a bonus.
I want into that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, I think we have had plenty of good discussions here.
And we didn't change any rates from CCW. That was the only thing that changed from what you saw at CCW.
Thank you. So we are ready possibly to go for first reading of this bylaw. Thank you.
I'll make motion to do first reading for 15B to D.
The utility rates bylaw.
Right.
Any further comment, questions? Sign on. All in favor? Thank you very much. We don't need to go for second and third. We can do that some other time.
Do we need to worry about this... Just this immediate pass discussion on all our utility rate hookups?
I think administration will look into it.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, Counselor. What was that?
Does it... Do you have to have the last discussion on the 250 hookups in that bylaw?
It is in there.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
It is here, which I did not have on my schedule, but the hooker for the east...
Right.
...properties on Edna, that is something that administration could look at and see.
Yeah, I think the rate covers it. I think we're fine there.
Yeah, I think so.
Just for your information, how it works for the town is we have... I don't remember. It's a couple of thousand acre fee licenses, but we only pay one parcel fee and then we just pay about between $12 and $15 an acre foot. So we don't pay $250 for every acre we have. We just pay it once as a minimum parcel and then how many acres we then have. So if we can get $250 per connection, we can really start to offset some of our irrigation fee charges. That can be a benefit for us. And it's the same benefit the resident will get from hooking directly into the irrigation district. So it's not an inferior benefit to them at all.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. On the east side of the road, where you've got the sage management now, is it southwest on the other side of the road? Can't remember which one.
Oh, you're just talking about the concrete?
Southwest of concrete. No, I'm talking about the sage on the other side. Where do they get their water from? They get there from the Edna irrigation system?
Oh, you're talking about the Old West Creek building?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. We domestically supply them.
We do supply them. And the Revel property as well?
I assume so. I'm not hard... I assume so because it goes right by there.
Okay.
But I know we supply the Old West Creek building.
All right. Let's carry on. Let's go on the seven other business. So here are different motions that will need to be given by this council for transfer of funds from a reserve account. So that includes three different items: electrical department, civic center, and paving. So you really need to look at the different account the money is going to come from in order to pay for the cost of items that are listed there. For paving, it was the extra paving we had. Electrical was some unforeseen expenses and the civic center also required some money. Councillor Self?
Let's move that council accrue a transfer of $40,000 from reserve account 4-10-269 to electrical capital account 2-92-762.
Okay. You done that very well. Thank you. So, any comments, questions?
I'm just wondering...
Go ahead, Councillor Brown.
The reasons for this, the mistakes that we're making, how did you handle that, Jeff?
I'm not sure there are also mistakes.
But it's all a fault.
So one of the things is, and Leonard put in his letter, was simply he looked at like an account expense and there was some stuff already that had been ordered and should have been committed. So it just wasn't watching what had gone through that quick. And then we incurred some expenses on things like the KFC, but we're gonna get some of it back, but not all the back, so we replaced some infrastructure that wasn't anticipated at the time. So thankfully in that department, we have a fairly healthy reserve. So we have $218,000, I believe, in that reserve.
So as to your question, how could administration or the department themselves do better to avoid those type of things that's for Jeff to know?
Ideally, if when they issued a purchase order, it pulled that money out of the account, that would be ideal because then they wouldn't issue anything. Even if it hadn't been paid, it would have showed it committed. Our system doesn't do that. There's many systems out there that do. We don't have a... We don't use the purchase order module like that in our system, but it's rare. Thankfully, that doesn't happen to us a lot. This time it did. Yeah, this time it did.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the table. All in favor? Thank you. We don't have too much choice in that. Alright. The next one is a transfer to the civic center capital account because of our boiler gave up the cost. And the expense was definitely beyond and above what we thought the boiler cost to be replaced. So it's a very expensive proposition. So we need a motion to fix that. Counselor Brown?
I move to approve a transfer of $41,901 from the reserve account 4-10-268 and a transfer of $13,099 from account 4-10-260 to the civic center capital account 2-72-417.
Thank you. Well done. Yeah, as you can see, that cost over $50,000 to replace some 50, oh, $55,000 to replace that boiler.
Has this work been done already?
No. So we're, yeah, go away from this building or the office and it's, it's chilly. We are waiting for a third quote. We should have, I think tomorrow. The biggest issue we're having is this old building was built around the old boiler and trying to find when you can fit down the stairs is proving difficult. So we do have two quotes. We have a third. We're just waiting on that. It'll be, it'll be a go pending funding approval. But no, it's, it's a little chilly in some of the parts of the building.
And you're gonna have to knock out the wall again?
Well, I, boy, I hope not, but.
So that's why all the gymnastics kids are peddled around the garbage?
Yeah. So apparently when they get going, they're feeling pretty good because they're active and running around. But we did get a couple of 220 volt heaters that are wired into the gym to try and take the edge off a little bit. And then we keep the doors of the offices open during the day to try and throw a little heat out there. But that's the story there.
Alright, so we need to vote on this. All in favor? Thank you. Alright, there is a third one that has to do with the additional paving and I must say, it really makes a huge difference up on the East Hill. So, Counselor Drew?
On the commotion to approve the transfer of $25,000 from the reserve account 4-10-260 to the 2-3, third, 32-762 for new paving count.
Thank you. Questions?
Just off, just for curiosity, can I ask what's going on with the family food parking lot? What's going on down there?
Yeah, so that, we're not involved with that one. I think they had a water line.
Water line, yeah.
Okay, so it's not affecting our water line? Because I understood the prevention building is without water for a bit too.
I, I don't know any, we haven't been receiving any kind of feedback on that. Whether they had to shut off a valve for a while to isolate some things there, I don't know. But it hasn't been our project, so I'm not really sure.
Now, regarding the paving on the East Hill.
The junior high?
For the junior high. This has yet to be completed.
Waiting for a nice stretch of warm sunny weather.
Yeah. And there is also on the bottom, what the old, that little portion there needs to be completed.
While we're on this, is there any plans to fix some of the puddles in intersections for this whole place?
I, I'd have to talk to Bart. I don't, I don't know where they're at with it, but I assume they're usually fairly good about being on that.
Okay. Yeah, there's quite a few obstacles here. All in favor? Thank you. Alright, thank you, Counselor. Now, under seven B, there's a request for a tax penalty waiver. There are two requests in fact. One has to do for a building on Main Street. The other one has to do with fast gas. So the first request has a little bit of a problem in my view that is well indicated by administration. Is that there never was a request to defer the penalty. And that has been going on for quite a while. The house had been put, the business had been put up for sales, for taxes. And now we are asked to redeem the past, the past penalties. This one for me is a difficult one to accept. But Counselors, that's your call. Yes.
How long has the individual been passed away? He's been gone for four years, five years, hasn't he?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. CISO is a different.
Not the owner. You're talking about the renter?
Yeah.
He just passed away a year and a half ago.
The question is, taxes.
But did he was paying, was he paying the taxes on it while he was alive?
Counselor, the responsibility of taxes is to the landowner. That there is an arrangement with the renter is irrelevant to us. Every landowner has to pay his taxes and should know that he has taxes to pay, should be really watching to make sure the taxes have been paid. It's only a phone call away. We have done a lot of communication, Jill has passed a tremendous amount of time, office time, to try to reach that person who completely ignored us. So it's difficult to, to feel that the legal issues there needs to be waived.
So Jeff, it says in here that they've been paid, the taxes paid in full. That include the penalty? So what he's asking for us is the refund.
That's right. This one's unusual because there was no payments on the property for four years and we put it to tax sale. And then right before the tax sale, the taxes were paid. And now he's saying, hey, help me next year if you refunded four years' worth of penalties to my upcoming. It's unusual and I'm not sure, I'm not sure I support that kind of a waiver. It's very unusual. And the penalties were justified because he's been in arrears for four years. That's why. So I'm, I'm not sure why now we would refund the, the penalties that have been paid. But again, you have that discretion.
See, do you mind me asking a question? The only thing that I would like to know, has the landowner opted now to go on a tip program?
I don't believe so, no.
And would it be advantageous for him to go on a tip program?
It would be advantageous for us, but I don't know that he's prepared to do that.
He's not prepared to do that.
I don't think so.
Should we ask him?
I'd have to talk to Jill, but I, I think that did come up and I don't think there was an intent to prepay.
Because if there was any hope for us to no longer have that type of issue, it would be definitely good for both parties.
Just a question. Are the buildings that are empty on Main Street, are they taxed differently than if they actually have a business in there?
Well, no, I, my first reaction was no based on assessment. However, the assessor has a number of models they can use to assess and one of those models is revenue driven. And so he'll look and say, okay, you, you, you rent this building, you lease this building, what's the value of the lease? And they tax on a model based on the value of the lease. So where they're empty, they're probably just straight assessment driven tax. And I couldn't say whether that, how, how different those models are. I just don't know.
Yeah. Alright, so are we ready to make a decision?
No, I had a comment. I was wondering if, we had this discussion regarding the Kahoon Hotel and we decided we weren't going to waive them, those taxes. Where is, where is the difference between this one and that one?
Well, the difference is the Kahoon's always been current. Like his payments have always been current. He's not, he wasn't asking about arrears penalties.
This one is.
In this case, it's just penalties on arrears.
This one is not to take away the taxes, it's to reimburse the penalty.
Yeah, right.
It's a different story. Okay, somebody is ready to make a motion?
We're not.
Counselor.
I move that we not provide any waiver of taxes or penalties.
Okay, regarding that property.
There's an address. There's a 193.
On 238 Main Street.
283.
283.
Oh, I'm sorry.
238.
Yeah, 238. That's what I read.
230.
Okay. Alright. Questions? I think none. All in favor? It's unfortunate, but sometimes it has to be just. The next one is a different story. It's a post office problem. It's a story of a business receiving, not receiving its tax notice because the business is owned by a property management group that is not at the location of the building. So in consequence, it is, in my opinion, something that has had a precedent in town with another gas station in fact, Yost Bar. And similar kind of stories. So my point of view is that paid the taxes, but I'm just wondering if we could refund the penalty that was put on it that I would not have had had they received a tax notice on top of it.
But as a bill payer, I know that if I do not get a bill in the mail, whether it's their fault or my fault, I know that I have to follow it up. And so you call and you find out what your bill is. So if I don't get my property taxes in May and they're due in June, I know I have to go calling for it. So I struggle with waiving, giving them money back. I know they're, they weren't, you know, it's not yearly or anything. It's a one-time mishap. But I just feel like they should've known that on their property, if their property man, you know, a lot of you guys have properties and you know that on, in whatever month, June, properties due, the taxes are due, right? I love this.
You have a point, Counselor.
Canada Post is either on the verge of going on strike here right away. And I've been getting notifications by email telling me that even though Canada Post is on, gonna go on strike, I am responsible to ensure that my payments are made on time or penalties will approved. So it's unfortunate, it really is. But I understand business too. I understand.
To my point of view, it's a little bit different, in my opinion, in the sense that it's a property manager that not only forward the tax to the people that manage the business, that did not receive the tax notification, therefore it was not moved on to the business. So that, the reason is fair enough, the business is because there was a change of address and the post office did not forward the bill. Now, did the, the post office receive the change of address? I don't know.
I mean, you can only survive this, but if they're doing this with all the, with all the properties that they manage.
They should've known there was taxes being paid.
They should've known. And it's, and it's not up to us to keep up to their address. It's not their address that's kind of occurring.
The only synonym, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with that. Okay, so we heard of three counselors. I need to hear from the rest. Counselor, self.
A little bit torn on this one simply because we try to be fair and we try to do what we've done consistently in the past. If you hear the council has waived penalties for extenuating circumstances like this for others, is that correct, Jeff?
It has been done for another.
Yeah, we've seen others where it's been logistical mix-up or something where they've come in and paid everything, including the penalty, to show good faith and then they've done it in the past. So yes, it's been done.
Plus, this particular business has never failed to pay their taxes or been in arrears or behind in the past.
I don't know where.
I guess there's a law of mercy too somewhere.
Counselor. I, I think we need to voice counsel, so if this, if they paid taxes in the past and there was a mix-up, yeah, I don't think that we should be giving them that.
Yeah, I can't really change it part here. So I, I'm okay with it.
Counselor, go.
Again, because this is not a regular occurrence with this business, if this happens again, I would certainly not be in favor of waiving it. But this particular time, there are good, there are good businesses in town. I can understand where Counselor Brown's coming from as well as their responsibility. However, I think it was just a mix-up.
Okay. My.
Pass the penalty on to Canada Post?
No.
My opinion on this one is, is probably more to err on the side of, there was an error made. Maybe there should've been more on the top of it, but there really was an error at the beginning. And I would have a tendency to, to be on the side of mercy on this one.
So to be on the side of mercy here, we're going to use taxpayers' money to give back to this business for their late penalties.
It's not the taxpayer money.
We're giving them back their own money.
Right, but that money comes back into curriculums, doesn't it? The land tax money.
It is a penalty we're talking about.
I know.
It is not the.
Which we already have. They've already paid the fine.
They paid it in goodwill.
Right.
But Mayor, at the end of the day, let's remember this, when you're paying two bucks a stamp in the near future when the strike gets resolved, then any of those letters that get sent out are tax notices. So in my mind, a significant amount of responsibility here applies to the federal government of Canada Post for the service they go to provide.
Yeah, that's a twist.
But the other, the other side of the coin too, we don't know whether the headquarters of Fast Gas got the notices out to the post office on time either. So we can't assume anything.
There is many things that we're not 100% sure. All but we know is what Jill was able to provide for them and understand.
Yeah.
What happened. So.
The land manager company did request Canada Post to forward.
To forward it to their BC address and that was not happening.
As soon as they found out their, their arrears, they came in and paid it. It smelled like you.
Instantly. There, there was no expedite passing by. Alright, so I think, thank you all for your opinion and it is a good discussion because you're right. How often do we use mercy? How often do we use justice? There is a place for both aspects, but we also need as council to use fairness and wisdom and see if precedents have been set with similar circumstances and we are equally know our judgment here. Okay, so, all in favor?
You don't have a motion.
Yeah, maybe I want a motion.
I'll make a motion. We waive the July 1st tax penalty for 192 Main Street on this fast gas.
Okay. Any questions? And if you have to vote against it, there's nothing wrong with that. All in favor? Against? Thank you. Okay, fast. Let's move on to the second, to the recreation master plan, seven C. As you remember, when we had our work session, we looked at that recreation plan quite in detail and we need now to move forward.
I make a motion that council adopt recreation master plan as a planning document going forward.
Thank you. Questions? Changes might occur to that document, still living document. And so amendments will be brought to council and will be ratified by council also. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. That was a long time coming and I'm glad we had it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Has this plan, this planning document, is this, is this ready to send over to the public so that they can have an idea of what's going on?
You just would, uh.
Okay.
Put it in motion.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know.
So this is just a draft, one item?
At this point, it is. Alright. Now, under seven E, there are a lot of business, but it's going to take quite a bit of time.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Everybody grab a motion and run with it.
Where are we? Are we on seven D now?
We're on seven D, yes. Resolution arising from the planning session. And you can see there's, there are quite a few. And so there is a, there is a recommendation that we all go ahead and.
Join the square dance.
Join the square dance, yes.
Mayor, could I just say something quick? I want to reiterate again, this is how Jill and I interpreted the meeting. By all means, if we didn't capture something, amend. Doesn't offend me at all. Doesn't offend me at all.
I do have one question, one motion.
Okay, go ahead.
The second motion, Jeff, I think the intent was for all of council to meet with the state presidencies.
Okay.
I think that's way out of question.
Maybe to have some.
Councillors.
Yes.
I'm sorry, say the thing again.
I think the intent was for all of us, the entire council, to meet with the state presidencies.
Yes.
Start a motion too.
Yeah. So if it's simply a motion to direct administration to set up a time for council to speak to LDS church, we'll just amend it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Maybe I'm looking at this a little bit differently, but it bothers me a bit where we speak to LDS church, state president regarding community, First Nations relationship, but not everybody in the community is LDS. I'm just wondering if we need to invite other stakeholders.
Okay. Can I maybe make a suggestion in the, in the view of the changes that we are required to use LDS rather than put a full name?
Us as council aren't required to do anything about that.
Out of respect.
Yeah.
No, I mean, if that changes less.
Yes, I wrote this pre-conference, let's make.
Okay, councillor Self.
I'd like to suggest that maybe we could word it, council meet with all faith-based.
The faith community?
The faith community members regarding relations.
Whoever takes that one, just word it appropriately there, you bet.
Okay, all right. Let's start with the first motion to direct administration to add the word inclusive after the word safe in a town of Carstston vision statement and to bring forward.
I will make a motion to direct administration to add the word inclusive after the word safe in the town of Carstston vision statement and bring forward for council approval.
Thank you councillor Gold. It seems a very small change, but it's a very significant change. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I make a motion to direct administration to set up a time for council, to council to speak to faith-based leaders regarding community First Nation relations efforts.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Motion to direct administration to distribute the recent letter from the mayor regarding policing and crime to the downtown merchants.
Okay. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Post motion?
I make a motion to direct administration to create some short public safety clips displaying in town.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Fifth motion.
Make a motion to direct administration to investigate the use of billboard in the town, advertise town positions.
What exactly did we have in mind there?
On the billboards coming and going out of Karstston, what can handle it? I don't know if we talked about it.
What exactly are we going to put on the billboards?
But this is what I'm kind of wondering.
I don't know if we have that.
It's like, I think administration will, I think directing administration.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer to that just yet, but I wouldn't mind mocking up a few ideas and running it past council for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so that's for administration to bring back some recommendations. So all in favor? Thank you. The sixth motion.
I move to direct administration to meet with the coordinators of the COP program and see if the town can help with any administrative duties or promotion campaigns.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
I would make a motion to direct administration investigate the recreation favorite watch program and reviving the block parent welcome liking programs.
Okay. Are we, uh, just would like to ask a question, are we going to involve FCSS in that process?
They have a funding piece in the past, whether they will be in the future, that's what we'll figure out.
Is that something we intend to do? Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
I make a motion to direct administration to investigate and report back to council on a potential bylaw amendment to cap the number of vehicles that can be associated to one property.
Councillor Self gets the name.
Yeah. All right. Any questions?
Um, just.
Councillor Gold, go ahead.
I don't know how many we were talking about here. I mean, I know my neighbors next door have got two or three of their adult children living at home right now, so it doesn't bother me whether there's probably four or five vehicles there all the time because they have adult children. Is this what we're talking about or is it cars parked over the grass and lawnmower on the street?
Well, if you have 12 cars that are registered today, you can legally park them, not only on the side of your, on of your property, but in adjacent street spaces and it's not always welcomed by the neighbors.
I'd like to ask Jeff, what, have you done any investigating of other communities of what they allow so that we can have some kind of a guideline here?
No, because you're seconds away from directing us to do so. So I haven't done yet.
The motion is to direct.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be coming soon.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you.
That's right, I just.
All right, so carry on.
I'll make a motion to direct administration to amend the parks and recreation advisory committee bylaw to allow for the creation of subcommittees.
Okay, so councillor Self, the, the rest will come soon.
And there's kind of a part B to this motion too, a kind of mixed down.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
I make a motion to direct administration to amend the bylaw related to the add cooperate creation facility, advisory board to be a subcommittee of parks and recreation advisory committee, which includes county resident representative.
Yeah. So that was to enlarge the committee and to provide more input to it. All in favor? Thank you. All right, 11.
I'd like to make the motion to direct administration to prepare the business case for off-site solar installations to credit the waste water treatment plant, water plant, museum, library, swimming pool and streetlights.
So if you remember, the reason why we're having that motion is because the provincial laws have changed now regarding the ability of having an off-site park, a solo park, to provide electricity to amenities that are further away from that plant. In the past, had to be on the building. All right, so all in favor? Thank you. 12.
I move to direct administration to engage the new presidency of the senior society to solicit ideas on the recommendation from the FCSS study.
Okay, so the FCSS study had to do with the.
It was a senior, what it was called, I should have put it in there, my apologies. Like livability for seniors is what it was around.
Okay. So all in favor? Thank you.
Yeah, this one is dear to my heart, so.
Go ahead councillor.
Motion to direct administration to set a meeting with the electoral officials of Carstston Emigre to discuss the ICF approach.
So sets in, into communities. Collaborative frame.
Collaborative.
Frame.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. We will need to.
Can I vote both hands on that one?
Yeah, well, you know what? That will come to pass.
14.
14.
I make a motion to direct administration to create a position paper for ICF negotiations based on the feedback from council.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. 15.
Mayor, before I make this motion, can I ask where the monitors are at the city center, ice rink and pool?
Yeah. So we have the marquee on the front of this building, we have a monitor just below the stairs here. We have the same thing at the ice rink, well, and it moves, summer it's at the pool, winter it's at the ice rink. So we have one that mimics this one downstairs at those facilities as well.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to give a motion?
You bet. I make a motion to direct administration to create a policy on the use of the marquee and monitors at the civic center, ice rink and swimming pool.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. We need to carry on.
Motion to direct administration to create a job description organizational structure to this position of community recreation coordinator and to do so forth.
Okay. All right. So that is, that is a recommendation of council to administration to try to improve the state of programming and use of facilities. All right. All in favor? Thank you so much.
So I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to continue negotiations with the Westman's Division regarding Lions Park and also adding the concept of the EJ Wood Site Development. Administration is also to include councillor Brown in future meetings.
Now it's an emotion, councillor.
Okay. Questions? You have, all in favor? Thank you. And at this point, I see that we have our delegation. Mr.
Good timings.
Mike Schaefer is here. And we will invite you right.
Hold on one second. You need to move to go to public hearing.
Yes, that's right. Absolutely.
And then I need to.
Well, everybody wants to do it, who has not done.
I'd like to have a three-minute break.
Okay, all right, so.
I need to get them through because.
No, I think you're five-minute public hearing, I think.
I'll make a motion to go to.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, you may want in a little while to state your position also. So Jeff, go ahead.
So I'll be quick here. This is a second public hearing on the western area structure plan. The bylaw has been amended, you've seen that in your background material. Essentially, the concern, the major concern at the previous meeting was 2A Avenue exiting onto 12th Street West. That's been remedied in this current proposal by creating 2 Avenue West that turns into 11A Avenue West going into 3rd Avenue West. Creating a small island with a couple of lots there. You have not had a chance to review the memo from Old Man River, I just got this this morning. And so I will hit on just a couple of points very quickly in it. You see Mr. Ryan Dick saying he supports the elimination of the second access, although he's reminding you that the current plan doesn't allow it anyway, but it's been eliminated from, from the original plan. And then he talks about, there's some, he heard some concerns about traffic management measures, but he thinks that can be managed okay. And then he made his comments again about density. Old Man River, of course, is going to push for higher density than Mr. Schaefer is intending simply because that's the provincial direction. So you can consider that. And then the other thing, and I didn't have a chance to talk with Mr. Schaefer and perhaps it would be a good question from council, is he talked about this island and how the houses will face on that island, but then proposed that potentially that, between the MR requirement and the town negotiating with Mr. Schaefer, that maybe that's acquired for green space. That may not be, have any appetite for Mr. Schaefer, we haven't discussed it. And then Mr. Ryan Dick gave you some sketches that he just did up quickly showing where we're trying to have green space within 400 meters of areas of the community and, and where some of those could potentially be, things of that nature. So there was nothing too major coming from Ryan when I read it over, you heard most of these same concerns last meeting. The only new one would be the concern of where houses would face in that island, if that's the appropriate thing to call it, we'll call it the island and the road there, about where you would face it. His proposal was to make it four lots and they would all face a different direction, but again, that doesn't meet the density request of Mr. Schaefer. I do want to remind you too, when it comes to discussing MR, the area structure plan does not commit MR. The subdivision does. So that's, will be negotiated. You, you don't have to come to a conclusion with Mr. Schaefer about municipal reserve tonight, that's not needed. You just have to determine if the plan is appropriate and then you could give some direction as far as what you want to see at subdivision time. But they don't have to happen at the same time, well, they won't happen at the same time. So that's the only changes, you saw both map and descriptive changes in the bylaw, those are the only changes to the bylaw since last time you saw it. And that's all I have to introduce it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, there might be some questions, Mayor.
Ask a question, the, the green space or the island, was that not just two lots?
Correct. Well, and it's still intended to be, we haven't negotiated MR with Mr. Schaefer because we're not at that point in the game yet.
So MR is really discussed when you start to subdivide.
Sure. Yeah. So it's a bit premature, but it's an option for the space.
I might add that MR doesn't necessarily mean that land either.
That's right. It can be cash in lieu of land, that's right.
It will all depend, there is different markets.
Yeah.
Water retention pond.
Yeah.
Jeff, can you tell us about that?
So it's in its same location, Mr. Schaefer would have to accommodate the water flows with his ditch system, so that would be up to him at the time of development. We've talked about that briefly before, we were a little bit worried that the culvert lined up exactly where 3rd is, but it doesn't appear to be the case, so it should be able to be diverted okay.
Can that also be classed as in a.
Well, it's set aside as a utility lot because that's its purpose. It can't be, it's difficult to use it for recreation when it's underwater. I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be sarcastic, I'm just saying its intention is to be a wet pond. And so we don't consider it green space in that definition.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, if you'd like to come and state your case, if you like the changes, if you're satisfied with the changes and all that, you probably have questions regarding the ORC suggestion.
Sorry, I'm quite a bit out of the weather.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming.
But Jeff told me it would be nice if I came down. I know last time I was here, Mayor, you asked me if I'd be open to some changes. And when Mr. Carr called me fall of day and said, oh, I kind of got that feeling from you that it was going to be not accepted. And he gave me that, that drawing that you have there. Originally, I didn't, I didn't care for it, it's more road for me to build, so there's more expense for me there. But I'm okay with it right now. I've looked at it and I've thought, you know, it will, I think it could be quite a nice area.
That's it too, by the way, just didn't want to reference it there, so I guess I said there.
Okay. The, yeah, I think it will be quite nice, I'm okay with it. Like I say, it does cost me a little bit more to build some road. The, the two, the middle area, which I guess doesn't, we don't have to deal with that right now, but.
Right.
I don't know if it's big enough of an area for four lots, you know, for that, but other than that, I wasn't going to come here and give you the same speech I gave last one, so just let you know that I, this is nice, I think it will.
Okay.
Do well.
So you can live with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And councillor, do you have any question for Mr. Schaefer? As long as you remember that MR will be a discussion for the future.
Yeah.
Not at this point.
The question I have is on the lot sizes.
Okay.
What would be the lot sizes? Do you have an idea, Jeff? But if you did, did it go to four lots on that one area there, one spot?
That's small.
110.
110, 180.
It'd be 110 by 180.
110 by 180 for those middle ones.
Right. And it's not.
You said divided.
Four that size?
You said divided.
No, that's two that size.
Two.
It's two, yes. Okay, so.
They would not split very well.
Yeah, that changes the gap.
It wouldn't split.
But they're still not too bad. Well, 110 by 80, yeah, they're not the half-acre sized lots that I wanted, but they're still a, a good size.
They'd be more like a quarter acre.
They're probably a third.
A third?
Yeah.
Well, they're still bigger than most residential lots.
They're still good-sized lots.
Not that bad, really.
Any other question or comment?
One, one thing councillor, maybe just, while, while Mr. Schaefer's still here, one of the recommendations from ORC was to take that big corner lot and divide and make it two. But you may want to speak, Mike, about your intentions with that, why it's so big in the drawing.
Because that was my lot. Because that was my lot.
Yeah.
And you like kind of grass, right?
Yeah. My wife does.
He also wants raw water irrigation.
All right.
That's why that one's big.
Yes. So that was on purpose, that you had the use for it. All right. Council, are you fine with this? All right. Thank you very much, and nurse your pole and get better.
I have a weekend long and not getting much better.
Okay. Well, we wish you well.
Thank you.
Okay, then. Thank you. All right. We need to resume into regular meeting. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, Councilor Bance, we need to move to recess.
I think we have food in 20 minutes, Jim. Is that something right? Okay, well, food about 10 minutes.
Or we can move on, and I'll just go, you can excuse me for a minute or two.
Okay, well, we can do that too.
Don't you just do that? If we're going to break again.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's move on with business arising from CCW. 7E1 is a Frank correspondence. As you can see, it's a reply to Mrs. Frank regarding the problem that she feels needs to be addressed on Main Street.
I just want to clarify about a recommendation made in CCW.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. 7E2, historical society request. As you recall, they needed an extra $500 that they had not foreseen.
Question I have on that, is this going to be a reoccurring or is this a one-time change?
It is a very good question. If you remember, we have asked the Historical Society to adjust their budget to fit within our budget timeframe in order for this situation not to occur again.
And I believe they will.
Yeah, I believe that they intend to have a three-year plan.
Just as a comment, as sidebar conversation with Susan Jensen about the notion of, you know, he seems very agreeable to, has he given some additional sources of funding that would be coming on a regular basis?
Councilor Van Gundy?
I'll make a motion to accept the Historical Society request, 500 dollars, after their choice.
Do we know where the money is coming from?
And the count is 262200.
262200?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor? All right. Regarding the Melon requests, there were two requests. So it had to be with tax concession request. One is for land and the other one for the Cameron Motel. So you had discussed that alliance at CCW, so now it's time to make the motions unless you have a change of heart.
Maybe a really long motion draft.
Yeah. And you can see the first motion is there. The motions are there as presented at CCW, so have me. Okay.
You want me to make them?
Please go ahead.
Okay. We calculate municipal portion of property taxes for lots 13 to 25 of what by plan 0814633 and lots 13 to 40 of what for plan 0814623, and rate of $1.15 each with the other portions of property taxes taxed as per the assessed value as established from time to time. This calculation be retroactive 2018 tax year, remain effective for 2021 tax year. It will be reevaluated by council. If any of the specified lots are sold to a third party, the management tax rate will be calculated as per the assessed value as established from time to time.
All right. So this, this was simply to say that the agreement that was done with the previous owner will be passed on to Mr. Melon regarding on sold lots. Okay? So do you have water?
Jim, can you grab a bottle of water?
Okay.
It's quite the motion you gave there. I didn't think it was going to choke everybody up.
All right.
He doesn't need to see your head.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. I'm so sorry, Councilor Brown. We didn't want you to get choked up. Hi. All right. So the other request is regarding the building on Main Street. So I need a motion to go along with the recommendation this council made.
If we're not making a change on that, do we have to have a motion?
So I didn't do an RFD on that because there didn't seem to be an appetite from the committee to do anything with it.
That's right.
So dislet it.
All right. So in that sense, we...
Status quo prevails.
So we will not pass a motion?
Well, you certainly can. It's fully within your discretion to change stuff.
So maybe the motion will allow for the status quo to, would, be worded that the status quo is...
Again, I don't understand why we need a motion if we're not changing anything. So continue to pay the same cost.
There's no change, though. Why do we need a motion?
There's probably no need for one. It's just to solidify the result of what council is doing.
I prefer to have a motion anyways. It's a real question.
Okay. Okay, all right. You want to make that motion, Councilor Van Gundy?
You bet. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we maintain the status quo on the Cameron Motel property located on the...
Okay, so that's fair enough. All in favor? Thank you. All right. The 7E4 Williams request, as you could see, there is a letter that has been written that represents the position of council that since all that much changes exactly in the middle of the property line and that the pole has been there forever, the town doesn't feel responsible for the incident that occurred to the vehicle of the owner. So...
So in this photo here, the one that's got the orange spray there, that represents the property line right there?
Yeah, I asked Brandon to go up the next day and just like paint it again.
So it is right, splitting the two properties.
All right.
So is it a recommendation?
Yeah.
No.
It's a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion to Redmond, sorry, the administration recommends, well, that's something to say.
You make a motion to not pay...
What are they, a motion to not pay or reimburse Mr. Rose for the cost of the related damage to his car? And that we will not...
All in favor? Thank you very much. It's unfortunate, but it's the way it has to be. 7E5, there is a finance team request. As you remember, we had a wonderful delegation that came, and the donation policy did not address the needs, but there was a need to really support the team.
I recommend that council ratify the recommendation made from CCW.
Regarding the...
The funds to take from 2-12-5.
For the finance team request. Okay. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Jeff delivered that check, by the way, to Mr. Gibbs. All right. 7E6 has to do with a November 13 council meeting. As you remember, we have a group from Alberta of services that are coming to discuss with the community or to present to the community position on the opioid prices and subsequent treatment, et cetera. And they want to do it in our community. Yes?
Any questions?
Please go ahead.
Would like to make a motion of council to hold the November 13, 2018 council meeting at the Tanner Senior Center.
Thank you. Open to the public, yes. And we will advertise it far and wide in order to get support of the community to come and get informed.
And I guess we don't have any kind of idea how many people would come. And the site up there says we can get 180 people. Do you think we'll get that many people in?
Start talking about it.
We need to invite as many of the people that we know to come and get informed. It's quite an important topic. Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Mayor Alonzo, do we have any idea how many people showed up in the last council chambers were there?
No.
Any like that?
I had about three different meetings. They had theirs, but it was a municipally driven.
Yeah, I'm just not sure.
It was a totally different type. All right. So we have 7E, 7F, business arising from the delegations. So here we need to really look at the West Area Structure Plan Amendment bylaw, and we now could have second and third reading. So essentially, you need to let this council know what changes you are willing to do. Is a large lot going to be subdivided, or do you live it the way Mr. Schaefer would like it to be? And as for the other changes regarding the subdivision of the island, there is really no further discussion there, I don't think, but let me know what you want to do. Essentially, he wants a large lot to go his own personal use.
How large is that lot going to be?
Well, it's a very large lot. It's really large.
Well, it's really large. Mine's really large, too. It's just over half an acre.
210 by 281, roughly 210 by 281 acres.
So it's quite a bit bigger than...
All right. So Councilor quote?
I will make a motion that we accept the changes as outlined in Schedule A.
Regarding the road?
Regarding the road and the changes to the area structure plan. For Mr. Schaefer.
Councilor Van Gundy?
Question on your motion. How soon do you want us to proceed with action on that part?
It's not even...
To me, it's not a development agreement.
It's not developed.
So we don't have to go, we don't have to entertain that?
No.
This isn't a development agreement.
It's regarding the road.
It can sit this way indefinitely, really. Frankly, it can, because you're just changing what you're allowing to be subdivided. But it's not the development agreement.
No. Okay.
And one thing I want to point out to Councilor Court's motion, which is great, because you need to make a motion to adopt the changes before you do second reading.
Right.
Glad you remembered that, because I forgot.
So that is the changes first. Okay. So what we have in your motion is the changes to the original bylaw. Okay?
Question. Does this include the placement of the roads, the third through road on 3rd Avenue as well?
That's coming in the development.
Is that not there yet? I noticed that he started to develop, dig up where the road will be.
This is to accept a West Area Structure Plan.
Yeah, with those changes. But does it specifically say in there that 3rd Avenue will go through, or did the previous council approve that already?
So you, are you talking, Council, on the east end by Dr. Clark's or on the west end onto 12th?
I'm talking the running through across to meet 12th.
Yeah. So that was approved in the original plan where 3rd would continue straight through. Again, no one's obligated to develop it because you don't have landowners that want to. But that was already in the previous plan. So any changes are, they're on your, on your computer, it has an orange dot around it. It's just in that area. And also where the storm plan is, we're tidying up some stuff that didn't get done quite well.
So as far as the question is, so his 3rd Avenue portion would start at 10th Street, 11th Street?
11th. 3rd Avenue's already developed from 10th.
The 3rd's already developed, so it would just be an extension of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there's utility to the west side of 3rd Avenue now.
All right. So we have a motion to amend the bylaw 1559D. Further comment or questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now we are ready to go for second reading and third reading.
I make a motion to amend the bylaw 1559D.
Okay. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Councilor Van Gundy?
I'll do the third reading of the West Area Structure Plan, receiving the consideration.
Time amendment by law. Okay. Further questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right. So this is done. The next question is regarding 7G and its town facility to coordination. Right now, we trade to aim for October the 23rd. This council has not had a chance to visit all the facilities in the past. We used to do it as part of the orientation, but it is better to do it after you understand a little bit the functioning of all those different structures. Okay? So 23rd will be, are you okay with all of you?
What time? At 3:00? It says it's going to take two hours to do it. So is that 3:00?
Yeah, I was just trying to take a guess. I'm really indifferent to the date, too. If there's a Friday afternoon that works well, I'm fine, but many of you kind of have Tuesdays set aside for council stuff. And so I thought if we met at 3:00 and we grabbed a couple of vehicles, we could probably have it worked out in a couple hours.
So 3:00? Are we okay with that?
I probably won't go. I've been through both of them, so I'm okay.
No, it's all right. It's all right. I mean, it's really meant for the new members of council or the other one?
I'll be there.
Have had the tour at least a couple times.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Under eight, we have a financial report for your information. Are there any questions regarding that financial report? It's always a very informative report and gives you a sense of how we are doing actual versus planned, and the actual looks good in comparison of the plan, so it's always a good sign. Yes?
Question?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Do you have any idea where we're sitting at all?
Yeah, I do. I'm going a bit off in memory, so bear with me, because I'll have all this ready for tomorrow night for the committee meeting. We are, I think, when I looked, so it would have been Friday, 448,000 revenue. We budgeted like 448 and change. We budgeted 450, so that was, I was happy to see. And we are at 388 in expenses. So there's about a $70,000 spread there. Sorry, $60,000 spread there. I anticipate having about $25,000 to $30,000 in additional expenses to finish out the year.
All right. So we are not in a hole.
I think we'll be about $30,000 left at the end of the year, which buys only a few golf carts, but...
Actually, I think that management outfit was actually beneficial.
Well, it held the expenses fairly well, but revenues actually came in where we budgeted budgeted, which I was pleased. It was within like fifteen hundred bucks, so that was good. Yeah, considering the weather. We didn't golf May or October, or September.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. We're going to do ten, and then we're going to maybe take a break.
Jeff, this is.
Ten?
This is mine. I'm going to turn it into a question and basically an answer situation. Oh, I've been in this community for eighty-eight years less four. The question I have is on our rooms. I see us laying new pavement down, and traditionally, one week later, we're tearing it up for some reason. That, I feel, needs to stop. There has to be better planning or whatever. Number two.
Okay. Can you hold on a second? Whereabouts are you thinking of? Are you thinking here?
All the new roads that are paved in this town, it's hereditary. It's been hereditary. We rip them up.
So if there, if there are properties that have connection issue with sewer and water, is there any other way to do it?
Absolutely, Mayor. I think our Public Works Department have maps and stuff like that where the connections are on the main lines. We're putting in brand-new services. I know that there have been a couple of properties that have dual services, and by accident, they have two hooks, they're up to the proper service, so they have to go back in. But I think that can be resolved also if they open up those pipes and see if they're used frequently, you know, before we do a hookup.
Okay. So administration will address that?
Well, all I can say is obviously it's not anticipated.
Right.
It's never planned that way. But you look at Second Avenue where Mr. Cam Levitt all of a sudden had a sewer problem. New house, not anticipated. Something came up, they dug on it. I wish I could tell you that you could, I wish I could tell you that when we dug up a street, we changed everybody's service line all the way to the house, but we don't. One of the things that council did two years ago, I think to help mitigate this, and I'll use Mr. Levitt's house as a good example. Urban renewal, new house on an old lot, and they don't change all the infrastructure, the sewer water lines that go out there. Well, now with your renewal program, those get changed. So it's going to start to remedy some of that stuff, right? You're not going to put new homes on clay town sewer lines. The town will go in and replace that now when there's an urban renewal. But I understand the frustration. We joke because you laugh so you don't cry. We joke about how new asphalt's softer, easier to dig up, but it's never the plan. Never the plan. You try and do a bucket width is all you want to do and get out of there and patch it up, for sure.
I appreciate what you're saying. I just want administration to take a real serious look at it before we start laying pavement, you know, and doing the services. Now, the next one. Why are we, the town of Carstow, always on the end of the bucket list for our paving? It seems like we're holding it off until September every year. The papers come in, and now we're in a situation where we've got one block completely opened up. The homeowners there have got some nice homes. If I was the wife, I'd be down, beating down Richard Hendry's throat for the people tracking mud into the house and so forth and the dirt blowing around. But why are we always so late beating our paving? Why can't it be done in a nice, warm month when the pavement will gel better, it'll stick better, and it dries better, hardens better?
We have contractors, right?
Yeah, yeah. We put it out every year. Generally, many times, because that's when we're ready for them. So because we're doing, I mean, we were scrambling to try and get ahead of McNally this year, and then the weather caught everybody. Now that, this year was a bad fall, frankly. But it's when we're normally ready. We don't want to bring them in and do this block, and then they demobilize, and they come in and do this block, and then demobilize. Our costs would just get really high, right? So I agree. In my ten years, we've had a couple. Well, one was where we both lived on Second, where again, it got cold on us when we paved. And it does happen. Most of the time, we're okay. And most of the time, we have nice, warm Septembers, and we're in good shape. This year, we didn't. It got us.
Okay. And my, my third one is this one. We pave beautiful streets. I mean, but what about our cockles, our intersections? I mean, our roads are going to the devil. I'll use one example. On Third and Third East, we paved half of that street, and now the north end of that street, it's right in front of Dr. Russell's family home. Half of the street was covered, it looks like. The other half was left, and the other half is a mess. I mean, it's now broke up, and it's going to deposit. And we're getting water infiltration into the road underneath the road, so it's going to wear that out. It's going to sift it away.
Yep.
We need, I feel, it's just my opinion, we need to take a better look at some years of doing patch repairing, you know, and sectional repairs instead of paving a whole road. Because our roads now are really going downhill, and we need to take a serious look at that. And we've got a intersection right here on Third Avenue and Seventh Street, you know, that's broke up really bad.
I would agree with about most of that, except for if you really want to see roads going downhill, this is our sister communities to the east of us. We are way better than them are.
But that's a way of getting at one. I mean, you can suggest anything like that. But we are concerned about Carstow. Not, we're not concerned about the rain and the sturm. What they do down there is their business. But I drive around just about every day, and I have looked at these roads and repairs, and I'm thinking to myself, there's something wrong here. Because I can remember, in living in this community, it wasn't that long ago, that roads were very much a priority, you know? And so we need to keep that on our agenda.
All right. Counselor Banbury? We hear your concerns. There are some interesting points. Go ahead.
But that might be a discussion with CCW in months, weeks, days ahead.
Well, the other part that'll come up is you're going to talk your first go budget next meeting.
Right.
So, you know, we'll propose to council, here's what we intend to dig up and to pave, and here's the costs. And if we need to dig up less so we can pave more, that's totally fine. It's completely fine. But we always have to be cautious, too. And this is for one, we'll use, for example, the road in front of the State Center that we just patched. We only went to that point because after that point, it's older infrastructure. So we stopped there because it's not that many years before we have to dig up that road and replace the sewer line. So you're going to have some of these roads that the asphalt is mimicking the infrastructure underneath it. And we don't want to pave a road and then five years later decide, we're going to tear the entire thing up to replace the sewer line, right? So it is mimicking what's underneath, some of the conditions of that road. It's one of the reasons why we stopped on Second Avenue. So we've done all of Second Avenue but the last two blocks. And that's because the asphalt's in really good shape, and the infrastructure under it's not bad either. So we just stopped on that until that asphalt deteriorates further. Then we'll replace the whole thing, but it's a little, it's pretty good asphalt on those last two blocks. It's quite nice. So it's this balancing act all the time, but next meeting at council's a good chance to talk about, let's dig up less, and we want to skim coat and pave more, and we'll look at what the infrastructure is under and make recommendations on that.
All right. So that is an interesting point, because there is an infrastructure master plan that is looking at thirty years ahead of ourselves. But it doesn't mean that it has to be religious.
No, no.
At year two. It means that we can, at the discretion of this council and at maybe with Public Works' input, decide how we can do the job better. And maybe that is something we need to consider in a, in the months to come.
Jeff, if I can come into your office and visit with you on one more thing before we have that meeting.
Okay.
I might have it on me in ten minutes.
It's where I work.
All right. So we also need to allow administration to have enough discretion in the ways they work, but suggestion are not without benefit. All right. We're going to do the correspondence, and then we'll take a break. Would that be okay, Counselor?
I believe.
All right. So let's do eleven. As you can see, we have two notices from Alberta Municipal Affairs, and we received some grant money under the form of the MSI, and that was welcome. It's already spent by the way. If eleven B was a letter of thanks from Mr. Darren Carron, and much appreciated when we receive thank you letters. Eleven C, Carston Festival of Light, it's a notice of activity and also a little bit of a plug for trying to be, to remind ourselves and our friends that if they want to do a donation towards a project, that they can receive a tax receipt for it.
That is a question.
Go ahead.
So what's our, have we participated?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Jeff can enlighten us.
Yeah, they're not looking for additional money from us. We already give them twenty-five hundred dollars a year as a base funding. So I put it in because they sent it out as information, but I actually met with Mrs. Wolford this morning to go over everything they're looking for from the town, and we're all good there.
Yeah. There's a certain amount of support we give them, this bucket truck.
Supposedly from individuals or businesses, I hear.
Yeah, but we also give them the bucket trucks, the manow, et cetera, to be able to string the lights.
I guess this is another sort of side comment in these conversations. It's very simple, the chamber member here. In the chamber, they get, you know, some requests from the festival lights to participate in some fashion, and it's just, and businesses, and they were talking about trees that are in boxes on Main Street, and some are going to be able to decorate those. So I suspect that we may hear something from the chamber in ways that you can do something.
Yeah. If there's a street where I'll let it up, it would be quite pretty.
Speaking of the trees on Main Street, at Christmas time, that would be kind of neat. You know, a lot of communities have all those bare trees lit up with some nice LED lights, and it's so pretty to go through.
That's exactly what he's talking about.
That's exactly what Gary was mentioning. And I think we should wholeheartedly support them on doing that and encourage them.
I want to think that the most important part of this is it brings economic growth to this community, because people come into Carston for this festival of lights. I've been there many times, and it's packed. Yes, that is bringing money to Carston, and we're all over that.
And it's always so brilliant.
Many years ago, the Rotary Club used to sponsor a Santa Claus parade, and that went over big time.
I think the Rotary does a lot already.
They do.
Okay. We are pretty well done with this portion of the meeting. We welcome Dr. Russell for the next portion. And so we need to recess.
Make a motion to recess for fifteen minutes?
Yeah. All in favor?
Busy.